One moment for the microphones.
Sir.
And we are ready.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for October 28, 2020. It is 6 o'clock. We're here at City Council chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Knapp.
Present.
Brown.
Brown.
Moeller.
Present.
Okay, we'll start offering a prayer by Councilmember Michael Ryan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Lord, please continue to guide our city, our city council, and our management teams with the decisions we make that will better our community. And please continue to protect our law enforcement, our police officers, our first responders, our firefighters, and keep them out of harm's way. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a special presentation this evening, as we have had for every meeting for several months. Coronavirus COVID-19 presentation update by Health Commissioner Kay Farrar. If you're ready, Kay.
Good evening, Mayor, citizens of Hamilton and council. I wanted to give you a quick update on where we're at with COVID-19 as of today. So, testing data for the state of Ohio, and this is updated from today, we're at 193,000 cases, 451. Presumed recovered out of that is 163,472.
I need you for one minute. You've got a little bit of an echo coming on.
We've got sound all over.
I'm sorry. I want to take a second.
Susan, can you shut those doors? It's driving me crazy.
I thought I was hearing stuff.
So, basically, what that means is there's right around 29,000 Ohioans that are currently isolated from the effects of being positive. Now, remember, that's always what we know of. So, the City of Hamilton Health Department is now receiving about 15 to 20 new cases per day. Butler County is getting approximately 100 new cases per day. This was last updated today, so the county as a whole is at 8,981 cases. Presumed recovered out of that are 6,977. The City of Hamilton currently has 1,218 cases. Hospitalized for the county as a whole, and this is total over time, was 494. There's about four to six hospitalizations per day currently. The deaths for the county are at 132, which include 25 City of Hamilton residents. There have been eight City of Hamilton resident deaths since 10/9/2020, so it is definitely ramped up. Butler County is experiencing a 6.7% positivity rate for COVID testing, which translates to that 100-plus per 100,000 population per day. It is pretty even across age groups. There used to be differentials where you could pull out an age group. It's pretty much between 5% and 6% in each and every age group, so it's not being isolated anymore to the young people. These are the key indicators from the state of Ohio, and again, I like to always draw your attention to the 21-day trend. So, for cases, we're definitely, you know, at an incline. We want to really try to hover that back down. For deaths, you know, we have some increases and decreases. That can happen very easily if there's an infection inside a long-term care facility, for instance. So, we're running right around. The percent change is about 14 per day. Hospitalizations, they were up just a couple of weeks ago. They seem to be trending a little bit down, which is hopeful. That's where we want to be. There was a long while where we were hitting bed occupancy in the hospitals approaching 90%, and sometimes over the 90%. We really want to be below 80%, and the reason that's such a big thing is that allows us to have all the elective surgeries and stuff. They have to keep a certain number of beds for what if someone has an elective procedure and they actually need to be hospitalized. ICU admissions, they're running around 19 per day, so that's been pretty fairly stable. I did want to talk to you guys about a wastewater treatment plant program. So, the City of Hamilton, as you know, we have our own wastewater treatment plant, and they have agreed to participate in the wastewater treatment study for COVID-19. And basically, what that amounts to is they take samples periodically of untreated waste. Not trying to gross anybody out, but it's a good meter for COVID-19 is shed in our stools. So, it's a good meter to kind of know if there's an increased viral load that, because not everybody goes and gets a test, right? So, this would pick up people and what the positivity is in the county in general and the city. So, today's data, I got an alert showing that we've had a sustained three samples over the last seven-day period that have had a tenfold increase of viral load of COVID-19. Now, just know there is a little noise in this data because, you know, it's not a perfect science, but it definitely tells us that we're trending in the wrong direction, and this is why we're running this study and really trying to watch things. So, the data is important, obviously, because it's a good indicator, and it captures people who don't get a test. And as a result of this data, I did call the Ohio Department of Health and asked for a pop-up testing site to be run in Hamilton because of the increased numbers. When I hear from the National Guard, I will let everybody know typically it takes about one to two weeks to get the guard in to do a pop-up testing site. Those pop-up testing sites, remember, are important because they are ones that you don't have to have a doctor's written order to get it, you don't have to have symptoms, and it is a drive-through site, and you get your results fairly rapidly. So, it's, I think, a two-hour turnover-ish to getting it. So, I will try to let everyone know another place to check for the schedule for pop-up testing. Remember, I want to remind everybody, it's coronavirus.ohio.gov. There's a website with a blue banner that is bright blue, and it says "testing sites." And if you pop on that and go to the bottom of the page, there's a tab that says "pop-up testing sites," and you would go on to that. Vigilance. So, this is my heart and my request for my city. In respect for others, please wear a mask. It's becoming even more important. Social distance, keep six feet. That's the recommendation. Hand washing, 20 seconds. Saying happy birthday twice if you have to, to keep your mind on how long do I really have to wash my hands. Avoid crowds and enclosed spaces. Support each other. Buy local. Call friends, check on them. You know, we have to be a community together. We're going to get through this. I know we are. We've got to get through it together. And then, just a note, our safe circle is the people that we live with. It's our household. I think we forget that sometimes, and I think over time, everybody's safe circle has expanded. We all want to be out and about and doing things again, but that's really your safe circle, is your immediate household. Everyone else, you should try to do that, those other things, keeping distance, keeping a mask on, washing your hands more often. It's not saying you can't get together, we just have to be wise about it. We want to keep moving forward. I've been asked a couple of times about what happens if we turn purple because we are red, and probably this week, I'm going to predict, we're going to go red with an asterisk. You have to be red with an asterisk for two weeks before you go purple. The Hamilton County Health Commissioner believes that they will be purple this week, so they're just a shock wave away. Remember, that guidance is just guidance. I don't think, you know, people ask what's going to happen. I don't think anything happens any differently. We just all have to stick together. This is really, really, really important. You know, strive to help each other, and these are the ways that we can help each other. Any questions?
Questions?
I have one question. So, is the wastewater testing, does it narrow it to neighborhoods, or it just says it's Hamilton?
It'll just be right at the plant, right before it's treated. They're taking samples and sending them, and what it, you know, unless you have a, unless you're not connected to the system, those are the only people that escape that. It's just a good way to kind of get a good tell of, you know, how much COVID we possibly have in the, and it's a tenfold increase. That's a big increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. We'll just go to Audience of Citizens, and we're doing Audience of Citizens by email. I believe we received one email this week. Is that correct, Daniel?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Can you please read that into the record? And I think we've had some action or some discussion already about this.
That's correct. So, the email is from a resident named Sharon Hughes. It's Sharon. Hughes 426@gmail.com. This is an email that's pertaining to parking on Main Street. I'm going to read it verbatim into the record. My husband and I have owned and lived a home in Hamilton on Main Street for 30 years. Within the past several years, the next-door house became a rental which houses multiple adults, all of whom have cars, at least six. We have always parked in front of our house and have had issues getting spaces with the addition of the neighbors. There is no on-street parking in front of our house and not enough room in the alley with all the cars. On top of extra cars needing space, they are not, they are not very considerate with spacing and often take up space sufficient to park three cars with just two of theirs. We've also had encounters with them for parking on our curb or pavers. I understand that on-street parking spaces are public parking, but have some regulation or mediation might make it easier to deal with bad neighbors. And she provided a list. Paint parking space lines similar to downtown and German Village, so it is evident that where one should place their car or allow others access. Enforce a 72-hour restriction in how long a car may remain without moving. They currently have two vehicles taking up three spaces in front of our house and have left town for vacation. Since the homeowner has to pay for curb replacement, fine those who park on curbs in an amount to offset the future assessment. Limit the number of vehicles per parking, excuse me, per property that require on-space parking, especially for rentals. This may become a bigger issue with Airbnb's slash Spooky Nook visitors. It also allow homeowners to pay for reserved parking in front of their homes. Fortunately, we are in the process of moving away from this house and these bad neighbors. Of course, we can't get a moving truck to the house this week due to their bad parking. I have contacted their landlord and HBD, an officer who was stopped by, was stopping by today and made it seem as if they were parking there illegally, and there was nothing that he could, he would slash could do. I presume that the parking for longer than 72 hours makes it illegal parking job. I think if your attention is concerned, Sharon Hughes, 719 Main Street. And Mayor, since then, I have contacted the Police Department and the Engineering Department as well. We'll follow up with her in the near future.
I mean, she did give some suggestions. I appreciate her making that known to us. That can be a problem in other neighborhoods as well. So, that's an example of an email which is getting looked at seriously. So, thank you, Daniel, and thanks for addressing that very timely. Okay, that's the only email that we had regarding agenda or non-agenda items, although I believe Dan Arthur's got a report to us on an ongoing issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
You want to come to podium, give us your name and your address, tell us an update.
Hi there. I'm Dan Arthur. I work up in engineering. I know some of you from the last time I worked for the city of Hamilton. Mr. Smith just wanted me to give a brief update on the odor issue that we've been experiencing down in Corwin Avenue and what we've done since the last council meeting to address the issue, some of the strides that we've made. We've kind of been attacking this from a two-part issue. One, looking at the immediate relief that we can provide, what we can do to provide immediate relief for the residents down there. And then, the other one is to look at long-term solutions to kind of control the odor problem. For the immediate relief, one of the bigger things that we've tackled was using biological methods where they put these pucks, and we put them in 17 manholes throughout the collecting system upstream of Corwin Avenue. It adds good bacteria to the wastewater, and that's what, you know, the bugs will attack instead of the sulfides, so you don't get the off-gassing. We put those in early in October, about three weeks ago or so, and we have seen some reduction in the hydrogen sulfide in that 600 block of Corwin Avenue. Public Works has been going out twice a day with a handheld meter in the morning and in the afternoons to see those levels and have noticed that they have been dropping. We've ordered another round of those biological tablets to install again this month to, you know, continue the improvement that we've seen there. The other thing that we've done is we've had those manhole odor eliminators purchased. We have one installed at the worst location for the odors, which is in the middle of that 600 block. That's been installed. The other ones are due in either today or tomorrow, and Public Works will start getting those installed as soon as they're received. Took a little longer to get those in than we had anticipated. The other way that we want to attack it to try to get a benefit to the residents right away was installing some filters on the vent stacks, particularly in that 600 block. We did some research and found a newer, newer style of vent stack that's, you know, it's black, so it absorbs the sun. The white ones that we had before, they had some issues that were brought up in the public meeting, saying that they froze. This has an inhibitor in it to prevent it from freezing in the winter, and they also last a lot longer. These ones say they'll last about two to four years between having to be maintained. So, we researched which ones to be using. I went out on-site yesterday and met with a lot of the residents. I was able to, in that 600 block, was able to talk with four different homeowners. The only one in that block that would be affected that I wasn't able to talk with is a renter, and I'm actually going to try to stop by there this evening and see if I can, I can catch them. All the conversations were very positive yesterday. They have noticed that they have, you know, seen a difference in the last few weeks in the area with the odors. They still say from time to time when they're out on a walk, they will notice it, but it does seem to be trending in the right direction. Our intent is to install those vent stacks. We'll get a contractor to do it. The property owners I spoke with yesterday were all willing to sign a waiver, you know, so the city is kind of indemnified from not having to, to have a contractor to install those. They were all willing to sign those. A lot of them didn't want to have, to put them on themselves. The other thing we've been looking at is the long-term fix on this. We bought two long-term hydrogen sulfide meters that we installed on Tuesday, one in that 600 block to kind of see what the hydrogen sulfide levels are. It captures data about every three minutes into that unit and has Bluetooth technology to be able to download from it. We also put one out near Route 4 along Corwin Avenue to see what the flows are like when they leave the forced main from that pump station out there. So, those have been installed. We have an independent lab that came out and installed the sampling equipment that went in on Monday, and we have seven sites that we had selected upstream of Corwin Avenue to kind of pinpoint where the, what the chemistry is of the wastewater in those areas and see if we can maybe figure out if there's some industrial users that are contributing to the odors, possibly partner with them to get the issue fixed long-term. The other long-term solution is the large diameter interceptor that we are intending to put in. We've worked with Fishback. They are the consulting firm that we selected. We had worked with them last year to do some modeling of Corwin Avenue and the pump station and do preliminary layout and design. They, we're into the, we're moving that contract and changing the agreement to amend the agreement to take it to full design and move that project forward so we can complete things by July 1st of 2021. So far, like I said, the efforts seem to be working. The hydrogen sulfide levels have been trending down with the efforts that we've done so far, and we'll continue to do more as the months come on. I just wanted to come out and give you a little bit of an update and see if there's any questions you guys had with that project.
Now, we had quite a few people here at the chambers, how many Mondays ago it was, but is there a list of email addresses you're sending these updates to?
Uh huh. Yep.
Along those tablets last?
About a month.
About a month, okay. You're reviewing data from the meters that have been installed?
The, they're going to be installed for about 30 days from the lab to get that data, and then they'll get that to us so we can review that data and see where the issues are coming from.
Yes, I'll give you times of day when it might be worse than other times of day and days of the week.
Right.
Then can you go back to various companies and see how that adds up or how that might match?
Yes.
For all the questions, anybody else have any kind of questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Please.
In your opinion, because the weather has cooled, we're in 40, 50-degree temperatures rather than a couple of weeks ago, or four weeks ago, when the residents were with us, would the temperatures 75 to 80, 85 degrees be changed now because we're in that 40 to 50-degree temperature throw, or?
They could be. I mean, there could be factors like that. One of the industries has a different process that they're using now than they were, you know, a month ago, so there are some factors that could affect it along those lines.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Sure. Absolutely.
I think that takes care of any kind of reports in the Audience of Citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that includes items of approval of minutes, all staff reports, you know, file council information, caucus reports, October monthly financial report, and October monthly investment report. There is no committee of the whole at this time based upon our COVID safety plan, so is there a motion regarding the consent agenda and the recommendations?
So moved.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Councilmember Knapp. The council received the reports of the consent agenda, concurring the recommendations. The second is by Councilmember Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. And for the record, the Cox agenda did have on a sale of land, some license fee revisions, and two liquor permit actions, 930 Main Street and 901 Laurel Avenue. Now, we're going to go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. Now, I've took the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. That motion says that the notes that are made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished, a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting. Motion was made by Council, excuse me, by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. There is no pending legislation, so we go to new legislation. Number five on the agenda, the first reading of an ordinance involving pay ranges.
In ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's classification compensation plan as set forth in emergency ordinance number EOR 2020-1-6 adopted January 15, 2020 to reassign the pay ranges for the manager of hydroelectric operations and customer service administrative positions and establish position for environmental health and city specialist, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number six, first reading ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending in December 31, 2020, first reading.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, first reading ordinance involving a side lot at 1211 Ludlow Street.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to Stacy Dion Smith and Lakeisha Tamika Givens Smith, first reading. This is the, this is 1211 Ludlow Street.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number eight, resolution involving a agreement between City of Hamilton and Butler County Public Defender Commission.
A resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and Butler County Public Defender Commission relative to reimbursement of appointing legal counsel to represent indignant defenders in the Hamilton Municipal Court.
You.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got to make a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Ryan, and we can hear the vacuum cleaner now. Roll call vote, please, on the number eight.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number nine, resolution involving a tax incentive review council and continuation of some current agreements.
A resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council regarding continuation of current tax increment financing agreements, enterprise zone agreements, and community reinvestment area agreements as heretofore granted by the City of Hamilton to various organizations doing business in the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 10, resolution involving the sale of road salt to Hamilton City School District.
A resolution authorizing directing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the sale of road salt to the Hamilton City School District for the 2020, 2020, 21, excuse me, 2021 winter season.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Knapp. Any discussion or comments about this one? Hey, hearing none, roll call.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number 11, which is a resolution involving a supply agreement between the City of Hamilton and Vibrant WTR LLC.
A resolution ratifying the, and approving the execution of a supply agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and Vibrant WTR LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion, questions, or comments about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number 12, a resolution involving a side lot 418 and 422 South Fourth Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to adjoining property owner as a side lot, 418 and 422 South Fourth Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ryan, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any questions, discussion, comments on this one? Roll call.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number 13, which is a resolution involving a lease of property side lot, 118 Art Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to the adjoining property owner as a side lot, 118 Art Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knapp, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven-zero.
Audience of city manager, please.
I have nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Audience of City Council. Have anything they have to say?
No.
Um, I'd like to thank some city employees, uh, obviously Kay and her crew. But I had the opportunity to sit in the meeting this week, infrastructure meeting, and I believe Vice Mayor Pullman was there for a while. You were there too, I think, and I'm with Nab. I want to say thanks to Dan Loes and Nathan Perry, very hardworking people. They've done some, they've done a great job during a difficult time with some of the infrastructure things that we have going on, so we'll pass on to them that we thank them, uh, for city manager. Steve Timmer, I was out at golf course today for a little bit, and, uh, he mentioned to me that he saw Bentley parked at a golf course parking lot and a Porsche parked at a golf course parking lot. What does that tell us? We've got country club golf courses going right now. So, and when you spend a few minutes with Steve Timmer, you can see why. So, uh, stay tuned. Uh, those will be places to go to, not just for our residents, but those driving, I think, truly, truly miles, hundreds of miles possibly to get here. Um, Truck or Treat is vent at the north end Thursday night if I'm not mistaken, and it's a really neat event. Our, our Trick or Treat is Saturday from 6:00 to 8:00 if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? Yeah, we just hope it's, uh, smart and safe. Trick or treating this year, any comments from council before we talk about a possible executive session?
Mr. Mayor, please, you, in so much you're facing the camera, uh, remind the folks about our veterans.
Yes, thank you. Uh, November the 8th, at the Butler County Fairgrounds, there's going to be a, uh, Hamilton Veterans Hall of Fame event. It's the second year of us doing that, and, uh, we thought last year's class was an amazing class, this year's is as well.